All right, I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, September 1st. Todd County Board of Commissioners Board Meeting, all Commissioners are present along with our Auditor Treasurer, our County Coordinator, Chief Deputy Auditor Treasurer, our Sheriff, and attending in person will be Steve Ock, our Sheriff, Mitch Johnson, our Facilities Director, Lauren Felbaum, our Public Works Director, Nancy Unicamp, Ditch Inspector, Michael Wazanowski, Emergency Management, Jack Yock, Health and Human Services, and attending through the phone line is Media and Dustin, is it Thomason?
Thomason.
Thomason of Ringdell Architects, and welcome to the public if you're viewing us online. And I believe we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have an addition to the agenda, and it would be the discussion on the solid waste survey.
And where would you like to?
If we could put it at the end, that would be fine.
At the end? Okay, anything else?
I have none.
If not, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Canizal, is there any discussion? If not, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried, thank you. Consent items?
Consent items today are meeting minute approval for August 18th, 2020, appointing nursing supervisor Erica Schwartz, hire full-time Correctional Officer Brooke Steinbach, hire full-time Correctional Officer Melissa Maraz, hire custodian Cory Georges, and a one-day dance license, roadies midway.
Okay, you've heard the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, discussion? If not, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you. Auditor Treasurer?
First item I have today is Commissioner Warrant, approving Commissioner Warrants, background was sent for review. Recommendation to approve the Commissioner Warrants in an ACH in a regular manual payment totaling in the amount of $72,753.21.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Becker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newman, discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Canizal?
Yes.
Commissioner Kircher?
Yes.
Next item I have then is the Health and Human Service Commissioner Warrants, background was sent for review. Recommendation is to approve the Health and Human Service Commissioner Warrants with an ACH in a regular manual totaling in the amount of $218,613.3.
All right, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Canizal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Erickson, discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kircher, or excuse me, Commissioner Canizal?
Yes.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kircher?
Yes.
The next item I have is the Health and Human Service SSIS Warrants, background was sent for review. Recommendation is to approve the Health and Human Service SSIS Warrants with an ACH in a regular manual payment totaling in the amount of $31,688.46.
Okay, you've heard the board action, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Canizal?
Yes.
Commissioner Kircher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Public Works, Lauren?
Good morning.
Morning. One item on the agenda this morning for Public Works is we'd like to set a fall road meeting. Last spring, we had one ready to go, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to cancel it. But we'd love to have another meeting with the board to bring the whole board up to speed on where we've been, where we're going, and what needs to be changed. So with that, speaking with Coordinator Pelzer, we thought that we could accomplish that yet this fall. And probably the appropriate spot for that typically is out at Public Works, but due to the tightness of our meeting room out there, we'd like to have it here in the boardroom. So with that, I gave a couple of options of what would work for Public Works the first couple of weeks of November. And typically, we have those meetings at 9:00 a.m., but we sure would be willing to change that if necessary. So with that, I guess our options are to set the fall road meeting with the dates listed there, or do not have a fall road meeting. But our recommendation would be to have a fall road meeting at the date the board selects.
Okay, Commissioners?
Tenth?
I'm looking at the fifth or the ninth, doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I would prefer the fifth because seventh, eighth, and ninth are opening.
Oh, yeah, right, my bad.
So I would prefer the fifth if it's okay.
Fifth and then the sixteenth is a Monday.
Yeah, sixteenth I'm open to.
Either one works for me.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I see, do you have a Minnesota Council on Aging on the fifth, Commissioner Newman, potentially?
Fifth, I think I might be okay.
Okay.
Fifth?
Oh, ways another 12.
At nine is in order.
Fifth at nine o'clock.
If that works for you, we could adjust at the afternoon, whatever works, we're open to whatever.
Okay, I need a motion then, I guess.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Canizal for November 5th road meeting, 9:00 a.m. here in the boardroom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, Ditch Inspector Nancy?
Good morning.
Morning.
Got one agenda item today. It's a County Ditch 26 Hold Harmless Agreement to Replace a Private Crossing. Recommendation is the Todd County Board of Commissioners approves the following by motion. Acting as ditch authority approves a hold harmless agreement petition from Allen Golden to install a 42-inch culvert to replace a private crossing in County Ditch 26 on parcel 010025501 in Bartlett Township, Section 24.
Okay, heard the request, or motion? Motion by Commissioner Canizal, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, discussion?
That's Gaden, not Golden.
Sorry, I just wasn't sure how I was gonna say that.
Gaden.
The contractor's been taken care of, so I haven't even talked to him at all, so.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Morning.
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 Board action has approved a change of direct supervision for Emergency Manager Michael Wazanowski from MIS, or from County Coordinator to Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff. So background, in January 2020, the Todd County Board of Commissioners approved restructuring of the MIS Department. Due to this restructure, the Personnel Committee recommends the change of direct supervision of Emergency Management from MIS Director to Sheriff. If approved, Emergency Management Director will report to the Sheriff. Options are, of course, to approve or not approve, and we recommend to approve, it is a budgeted item.
Okay, we've heard the request, I think it just makes sense. Mike is okay with that, we've had a Personnel Committee meeting, we discussed it, I think, pretty thoroughly, and everyone was pretty much in agreement that that's where it should be, under the direction of the Sheriff, and.
We have space for him for, have an office in our facility, and he'll become part of our Monday morning.
And that's where the EOC is there, and it just makes sense that Mike works with the Sheriff, and the Sheriff works with him, and it's a better flow of productivity, so. Have a motion?
So moved.
Who was that? Randy? Motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Canizal, any more discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just try and get along, guys.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Commissioners, we'll do our every two weeks.
There's something wrong with that chair?
I think your husband broke it.
Yeah.
We'll just do our board update here around COVID. As of August 31st, 2020, the Todd County has 449 lab confirmed cases, again, two COVID-related deaths. Just, again, to put that disclaimer out there, many people aren't tested, so the laboratory confirmed cases represent only a portion of the number of people who have been positive for Todd County. Cases no longer needing isolation is 97% for Todd County. Again, these are calculated from the first date of the test being August 17th, as of today, or yesterday. Gender, 54% of males, 43.6% of females, and then unknown, 1.6%. Our age range for Todd County is, again, one month to 85.3 years, and our average is 37.1. Total tests completed in Todd County as of 8/27 is 5,233, again, 9.3 positivity rate. Statewide lab confirmed positive cases is 75,864 with 1,817 deaths. Total hospitalized as of yesterday is 6,480, 306 of those are hospitalized with 131 in ICU age range. Most common age range with positivity is between the ages of 20 and 24. And then, community exposure is our most known exposure throughout the state, as well as in Todd County. Our 14-day average is, we're working with the schools. The current 14-day average right now is between August 2nd and August 15th is 4.50. Daily rate of 5.73, again, these are 15 cases.
Questions? Pretty silent this morning.
Is the CDC and the state on the same page now as far as testing and not testing, and who we're testing, or?
No.
Is there agreeing to disagree?
There's still, there is not a consensus on that yet that I'm aware of. CDC is saying that if you had exposure and you're asymptomatic, you don't need testing, where MDH feels differently, so. Some guidance is, our guidance is coming from the MDH that we're following at this point for the school districts.
I was in St. Cloud yesterday at my regular doctor's appointment, and they, at the cancer center there, they had curbside testing there, and there was quite a line of cars going in there. So it looks like people are wanting to get tested, I don't know what, were they doing the saliva testing, or how do they?
I'm guessing they're doing the internasal.
And then, when do you get the results once you?
Depends on who is doing the lab specimens, it's variable. We're hearing there's some extended waits yet at this time, so.
Are we still doing any curbside in our county?
I know Long Prairie does have a trailer outside, and they are doing curbside, I don't know what, oh, you are behind me, okay, good. What Lake Tri-County or Lakewood's doing?
Lakewood still has, where you drive up, there's too many parking spots, all the numbers, someone comes up.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I heard on the radio this morning that our case count in Minnesota is up, and with the mandatory mask being in place, I just found that kind of interesting, but then they come back and start blaming funerals and weddings, and it's like, really? I don't get it.
Right, and it's around mask compliance is what they're saying as well. People are getting together, they're not following the mask recommendations as set forth, so there's some concern about that, right?
I think you talked about it the other day at one of the meetings I was in, Catherine, and if you could maybe just tell the rest of them here too, on how, if there's a case or two within a school, and how the mask testing might take place, or what kind of?
Just get guidance, yes.
We got a little more guidance, yep, for the schools around exclusion guidance. I think the schools are most concerned is when a kid has symptoms, right, what do you do? And so, they've sort of broken it into worse symptoms, or more common symptoms and less common symptoms. More common symptoms are cough, shortness of breath, loss of taste or smell, which actually is a very common symptom for COVID, and a fever over 100.4. And then, less common symptoms are some of those digestive nausea, vomiting, chills, muscle aches, that kind of thing. So they're trying to really help the schools, because as we all know, kids have lots of symptoms all the time. You know, even my son, I went to open house last night, I said, "He's always congested, he just is." It's allergies, and so, you know, I think what you have to figure out is new and onset of symptoms, things like that. But as far as the testing, what will happen with the schools if they get a case or two? The important thing is to know if those cases are linked, which means my son had COVID, he gave it to the person next door. That's a linked case, right, or the person sitting right next to him, right? That's a linked case, that can be tracked, that's good. When they start to see unlinked cases, where they see a third grader, and then a fifth grader, and then a teacher in the music room, and those types of things, when they get to where, and most likely what'll happen with that, they'll see a lot of close contacts. And so, the tipping point is around 50 close contacts in a school. If there's less than 50, they're gonna ask those staff, students, to go to their local healthcare provider, right, to get tested. When it gets to 50, that's gonna be a little less manageable, and also, we'll start to show if there's widespread transmission across the school. So when it gets to 50 is when, that's when we would be looking at working with MDH, working with MDE, our regional support team, which Sourcewell's involved, and looking at doing a mask testing event, right? And that's where, just like at the local business in here, in town, you go in, you do test everyone within a day or two. And what that does is it really helps to, what we say, clear out the positives. But it helps identify everyone very quickly who's positive, so that people aren't spreading it for weeks and weeks and weeks, and you know, you're spreading it from here to here to here. That way, you can get everyone at one time identified who's a positive, and a lot of kids will be asymptomatic, and then be able to determine the amount of time they need to quarantine, isolate, that type of thing, so. And that mass testing may involve school staff, teachers, but it may involve parents, and siblings, and other people as well. Because we know, that's what we saw with the testing event here in town, where we tested all the employees, but to be honest, would have been really nice to test all their family and social contacts. That would have stopped it from being months of cases being reported, because our, you know, cases didn't end in May. They went on for a month or so. So that's how it would look like, we don't know who would do the testing, we don't know who'd pay for the testing, unfortunately. I think the state would be pretty involved with their EOC, if they have the capacity to be. What's gonna happen, we all know, when schools open, we'll see lots of cases. And so, then it'll be a matter of time of figuring out, do we have local capacity to deal with that or not? Sorry, does that answer?
Was great, yeah, no, I appreciate that, I just found it really interesting the other day, because I didn't know either how it was gonna work, so I just thought they would find it interesting too.
If you get tested, what's the timeline of getting the results? So the downtime there is?
When you do a mass testing event, just like we did here at Long Prairie, normally you get high priority for response. We had results within 12 hours, because they were carried straight to Mayo, the testing was done very quickly. So normally, those mass testing events, the lab results are much more expedited than if they go to different healthcare facilities. Right now, we're seeing, from what I can see, four to six days it takes to get those results back, which isn't horrible, but it's not great, right?
Good.
So typically, if you're doing one of these big events, Dave, then you get those results much faster.
But that also affects the school, if you hit that magic number of 50, and we're testing, but we haven't got the results back, how long is that downtime?
Right, and ideally, I mean, well, not ideally, you get them right away, but then you tell everyone who gets tested to isolate, they probably shut the school down for a couple of days, and then, based on those results, they can then start looking at, how do they let kids back in? But we'll see how it goes.
I know some of the schools that have two days, and then Wednesday is clean it, you know, scrub down the school day, and then Thursday and Friday they have class again, is that how?
All of our schools are starting in person K through 12, as of today.
So they go through all five days?
They're gonna go all five days. SOC Center, on the other hand, just as a comparison, is going K through four in person, five through 12. Stearns County's rates have sort of hovered around 10, they're at 9, but they were at 12, and so, I think SOC Center just decided that it was. So what they're doing is they have an S and a C group. So, the S group goes Monday, Thursday to school, the C group goes Tuesday, Friday to school, and Wednesday is distance learning for everyone, and that's the scrub down day, that's the day for teachers to prep as well. It's, but the bussing's a mess, you know, it's, it's a challenge. I think SOC Center just didn't want to start in person for a week or two and then have to switch right away. So that's what they're doing, the majority of our schools are looking at a similar model. The next band, or, you know, if we reach over that 10 as far as the case rate, and most of our schools are gonna watch that for about two weeks. If we just dip over 10, that doesn't mean they instantly have to switch to distance learning, they're gonna wait two weeks to see if that trend continues, and that's why we've been working with them in advance with a daily rate, because what MDH puts out is, is a bit delayed due to a specimen collection date, and that just takes more time. But that gives our school more time, which is good, you know, so they'll be able to figure out then. What'll happen first is distance learning for secondary, then distance learning for kind of everybody, and then, or hybrid, I should say. Hybrid for secondary, hybrid for elementary, and then distance learning for secondary, and then distance learning for everybody.
How are they feeding the kids, because when you have mealtime, it's a zoo in the conference area, so.
So when they go to a hybrid model, they have to do both. So they have to do in-person meals, and then they'll have to do what they did last spring, where they're baked, lunching, and delivering it, or having the kids come in and pick it up. So it's a lot of work, that hybrid model is really challenging for the schools. What they want to do is keep those elementary kids in as long as possible. If you recall last spring, as soon as elementary kids go to distance or hybrid, the school is required to provide childcare for any essential workers, and that's a lot of work for them. So their goal is to keep elementary in as long as possible.
Have you been working with all the school districts within the county, so this isn't just one school district, but it's, they're all?
Yep, all four, and then Swanville gets our daily case rates, we've been in touch with SOC Center and Osakis.
And we also been working with a bit, Morrison County around Ismottley, cover so many school districts to make sure that they're aware of what our rates are.
Right, those schools like Staples-Mottley, that crosses multiple counties, has to follow the county's case rate, that's the highest. That's unfortunately us, or it has been that trend, so we'll be watching that, of course. We work closely with Douglas County as well.
Okay, good, good information.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Administration?
Mr. Chair, we have a standing agenda item for discussions on the use of the CARES Act funds. So committees have been very busy in meeting and trying to work through the requests that we've had for use of these dollars. And today, we're gonna be talking about two projects that are taking place for Health and Human Services, some requests that they've been working on. Health and Human Services has been doing a great job of planning for any type of community outbreak, or just assisting with the community in this pandemic. And the two items that we're gonna be talking about today are revolving around mass testing and mass dispensing. So the first item that we have is a plan for Health and Human Services to utilize the Expo Building for mass testing and mass dispensing. So the background for this is that Health and Human Services has explored the option of utilizing the Expo Building for mass testing and mass dispensing. Renovations to the Expo Building would be needed to, would need to be made to accommodate for use of the building. The attached quote has been received by Ringdall, from Ringdall Architects for professional services, which will include architectural, mechanical, electrical, instructional engineering. The Facilities Committee recommends moving forward with the attached agreement in order to obtain a request for pricing on the construction project and request the use of CARES Act CRF funds for these services. So a little more detail to this, with using the Expo Building for mass testing and mass dispensing, the changes that would need to be made, or the requests that are being asked for, are to add heating and cooling to the building, and also to renovate the bathrooms so that they would be more accessible, and a couple of alternates to potentially add a CO system for a drive-through mass testing, mass dispensing event, and also to look at an alternate of taking care of the walls in the lean-to area. So the options are to approve the attached agreement with Ringdall Architects for professional services for $39,500, or do not approve the attached agreement, and of course, the recommendation is to approve the attached agreement for that amount. And we do have Dustin from Ringdall Architects on the conference call for any questions. Our biggest thing is that we are definitely working within a very tight timeframe to utilize these dollars and take care of a request as large as this, and we would want to move quickly if this does get approved by the board.
And I might add that I think this would be most favorable for the use of the CARES Act money because of what they want, to see more money go into this type of thing for mass, whatever you had, vaccinations, whatever else you gotta do, because let's face it, this isn't our only epidemic that we're probably gonna see. So I think this would be one of the most favorable things that they would approve, and the committees, I think, have talked this through. And I think it's just best that we move forward, we have deadlines, and if we don't meet them deadlines, then we're kind of out of the picture, so. I think it's critical that we do this, now's the time, and we're given the money, so let's get her done, so. So entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, discussion?
I too just want to comment from our sub-meeting yesterday with HHS, there's been some really good discussions, and I think going through this, everybody's learned a lot about how preparedness works, and all the different stuff that takes place. But I think having a building that the county owns and being able to utilize for stuff like this is very important also.
Well, it's a good point, Rod, and we're also recognizing our weaknesses, so.
Yes, absolutely, no, it's great.
And I think, if I could add with Rod's too, it's before we were going to use the school facilities,
where, instance like this, where it's a spreading disease, to get it into our own building without other people being around it, is a very positive also. Chris, how long will we hear back from Ringdall once?
Okay.
You know, what's the timeframe that we're working with?
So the timeframe that we are working with, and again, Dustin is available to comment on any of this, but the timeframe that we are working with to get the engineering, mechanical, architectural work that needs to be done, they are anticipating to have that completed by October 1st. That's kind of a cautious date, so it could be done sooner, and if it is done sooner, we probably would want to move quickly and potentially call a special meeting to act on those things. So October 1st would be the time that we have the actual documents back for, to go out for pricing for doing the project.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I know lumber yards, hardware stores are hard to get, stuff is, it's hard to get, you know, because a lot of businesses have been shut down, or slowed up, or whatever, so it's gonna be hard to get some of this stuff in, you know. I know, I know my brother-in-law says you cannot buy a freezer. You know, appliances like that, you can't even buy them. He can't get them, because they ain't making them fast enough, so. And that, so like air conditioning units and stuff, I don't know heater, I don't know what's gonna, you know, it might slow us down in that area, but.
Mr. Chair, we did talk through that a little bit at our Facilities Committee meeting, and talked about supply. Commissioner Erickson had some comments regarding that, just on the heating and cooling side. And we're just hopeful that this, if we act quickly, we'll be able to have time to get products ordered and get the project done. We did also have a conference call with Aronson Construction, who is our current construction manager that is working on our current Expo Building project, and they understand the timeframe is extremely tight, but they are very hopeful that the project would be completed within that timeframe.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just add, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but once we get the information back from Ringdall Architects, we would then go through the process of getting a request. the process of getting a request for pricing that will come before the board. The board will be able to make decisions on whether we do move forward. Once we get that pricing, what parts of the project we move forward on. So more decisions are gonna be coming with this project.
Well, you said the architect will have the plans to us, you hope, by October 1st?
Yep.
Then if we put it out for bidding, what time are we getting into... Well, we're into December almost.
Yep. So, Mr. Chair, because of the situation that we are in, and the timeframe to use the dollars, we do have opinions from our county attorney, and also from auditor treasurer, and from our consultant. We do have a current construction manager still on site with our Expo building. We would expedite this and use our emergency declaration to not follow the normal bid process.
Okay.
And within our packet, we do have those legal opinions from county attorney and county auditor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion? If not...
I'd like to add something regarding... Dustin will coordinate with Aronson Construction to...
Conversations and discussions that we're having, so they're aware of any mechanical things that are needed, all that stuff, so they can try and coordinate that as we're moving through the design process.
Maybe lift it up a little bit more, Jackie's probably too close. Hold on a second, Dustin. We're having trouble just trying to hear you a little bit there, Dustin. Now try it.
Okay. We will coordinate with Aronson Construction throughout the design process to keep them apprised of decisions that are being made, so that they're able to put numbers together as quickly as possible. I know you guys mentioned the HVAC equipment at times. We're well aware, that's probably our biggest hurdle at this point, getting rooftop units and what those delivery timelines may be. Again, working with the engineers to try and expedite that process is the best we can do at this point, is to keep them apprised of it, and get the stuff done as quick as we can, and get it out there, so they can get stuff ordered.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All's carried. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the second board action that I have today is another request from Health and Human Services, and this goes kind of hand in hand with the project of the mass testing and mass vaccination. Along with having a facility to do the mass test testing and vaccination, you need to have the supplies. So Health and Human Services has put together an itemized list of equipment and supplies that would be needed for a mass vaccination, mass testing. And this, this package, very detailed, they did a great job on putting this together. This includes doing it on-site at the Expo building, if that is our area in need. They can also take this on the road and go to another location to do mass testing and mass dispensing. So the, the request is to approve Health and Human Services CARES Act request of $58,154.76 to purchase needed equipment and supplies for community mass vaccination and/or community mass testing events. So that's the option, or the option to not approve, and the recommendation, of course, is to approve.
Okay, you've heard the board action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, sorry.
A little bit of question, Jackie. Does this include the trailer that we talked about yesterday? It does.
So is there an itemized... Yes.
Yes, okay.
At the very bottom of the itemized list.
Yes.
There it is.
If you have a motion by Commissioner Becker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Erickson. Discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
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 All's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item that I have, just to have as a point of reference on our use of the CARES Act funds, what you're seeing on the screen right now is just a breakdown of how these funds are proposed to be spent at this time. And I want to just clarify that we are working through all of the committees, and these numbers and these percentages can change depending on how the committees make decisions. But as of right now, we can see that a majority of the funds, the CARES Act funds are being pushed out to the small businesses and to the nonprofits. That is the current plan. Our next largest percentage is for public health. This would include the most recent board action that you just passed, both of them, for the mass vaccination and testing within that public health. Our third amount is public safety. We know that along with our public health events, we may have some need for additional security around public safety. There's also some security measures and safety measures wrapped into that $632,000. We do also have some payroll and personnel expenses that we will incur and we have incurred. We have some internal county modifications, some projects that are coming through our facilities committee, and that makes up 5% of that total. We have some technology requests. I do expect the technology one to maybe bump up a little bit higher, but right now, our requests are at $110,000. We have a category of other, which includes some expenses that we've had from solid waste, just because we've had some disposal issues where we've had to take some things to Wadena County, and also some just staffing, staffing expenses. And then we have a category of our PPE and supplies, which is at $13,000. So right now, our total is very close to the allotment that we were awarded by the state or given by the state, and we will continue to work through our committees, and you may see some of these percentages change. But I think it's a very good representation of where we're at.
Chris, we could also see some, excuse me, money coming, excuse me, coming back from the townships, that we then need to decide how to utilize that money. Am I correct?
Yep, that's correct. The total award that was allotted to Todd County, when you include the cities and the townships, is just over $4 million. So to date, we have 16, 16 townships who have applied and have received the funding, and we have nine cities who have applied and received funding. So there are a couple of townships that I need to continue to work with to see if they need some assistance in applying for those, those funds, and then also reach out to the two cities who have not, who have not certified yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, any comments?
I really appreciate working in these small groups that we have been doing. It really keeps us knowing what's happening, and the whys and how comes of what we're asking for.
I think it's also critical that we are taking care of our small businesses, too. And that's the most critical point to me. We can take care of ourselves after the fact, but I want, I wanna make sure our businesses are, are up and getting some of the money. But I kinda see the apps weren't really coming in by tons, so...
Yep. It's been a little bit of a slow go, and I'm not sure if Rick Utech is...
He's always...
Yep, we can maybe, Steve, if you wanna invite Rick in. So, and this is, this is kind of a trend that other counties are experiencing as well. It's been, it's been a little difficult to get some of these small businesses to, to apply. I think we've done... Rick has done a great job of advertising this. He's been on the radio stations, as was requested at the last board meeting. We've had this out on Facebook, we've had it on the websites. We've advertised it pretty heavily. It's just a slow process, and that is heard throughout other counties around us. So to date, we've had, Rick, I believe it was 35 applicants?
Thirty-six applications.
Thirty-six applications, and out of those 36, 27 of them would actually be eligible. And there's still some follow-up that would need to be done with those small businesses to make sure that they have all of their paperwork in.
Verification, everything, yeah.
Yep. So, and I can let Rick just go ahead and take that over and speak to that.
Yeah, total grant apps, we've had 36 total so far. Eligible apps, 27. At 5,000, the total amount kicked out would be about $123,000. If that was up to 10, it'd be $195,000. We have nine now eligible applications, and I have talked to all nine of them, and if we do a round two, they would definitely, you know, you know, fall into that category to do that. And round two would definitely be a little, you know, open to all businesses. Some of the applications, the eligible applications were under, seven were under $5,000, you know, for claims. And I really have to go through those applications, too, to double-check to see that they claimed everything they needed to claim. I actually contacted a couple, got those applications, got more information from them, and there's things they didn't put down, they could have put down on the, on the list, so worksheet. So I don't know if you talk about, you know, if you talk a little bit about thoughts about round, doing a round two?
So if I could, once they approve the, this now, once Rick approves it, or this committee, right? Does it go to a committee now, or does the committee review them already?
Uh, once I get everything set together to do a committee, probably, I thought about doing this week, but probably next week, Wednesday or Thursday, if we could do it, and get them ready to come.
Then how's that money distributed? How the application goes to the auditor treasurer? Who, and then the money is sent out?
Yep. So, Mr. Chair, the committee will review, just as you and Rick had described, and then it will come back before the board to say who is actually eligible to get the money, and the board will...
We have to approve that.
Yep. You will just approve it on the 15th.
Okay. Then the auditor treasurer will pay it.
Yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, if those 27, if those 27 that are eligible for this round, if they're found to actually be eligible with all of their documentation, that would be $135,000 that would go out. And then the remaining money that's within that $600,000 would just be rolled into the next round of grants.
Okay. Which probably will, I think, involve more money, so, because you're getting into the larger businesses, right?
Larger group.
Yep.
And should I speak a little bit about round two? What I was suggesting round two was make it up to $10,000. And then also, those who have money that qualified for more on round one could reapply for that extra money. And because we already have their information, all their data and everything, what we could do is just ask them to complete the first page, do the sign, the cut, the sign the signage page, and then submit that, because we already have all their information in front of us, unless they have other information that they could show where they actually have more, more of a claim. But we have quite a few of them that have, that are well over $10,000, so...
And they'll be taken care of in round two?
Yes.
Okay. We still have about five, 400 and some thousand to spend yet.
We do, we do. And I think just having this, this extra timeframe, and we've, we've had this open for three weeks, and now opening this back up, once we do this actual granting on the 15th, and then opening it back up, it's gonna get the word out more to businesses. I mean, we, we've reached out to businesses, and it's just been a little bit slow.
I met with one restaurant yesterday, and they said, "I didn't realize that was that easy." So, so he said, "I wish I would've applied," and, and he said, "There's round two, I definitely will apply." I have a lot of expenses. He had, they actually had a lot of expenses. We're getting things ready, putting up tents, and, you know, all their things for, for COVID-19. So we'll see a lot more people. And then run another three-week application window, and then, and that hopefully around October 9th, so we can get everything wrapped up before November.
Well, it's critical to me that we help these businesses out, and I think that we are trying to do that, but I think some of them are afraid that this is a, probably a 30-page application or something, and don't wanna touch it, you know. But this, the application is so simplified that it's pretty easy to fill out, so...
And one thing I will say is this, in our meetings with MAPS Ed Group, those are county economic developers around the state, they run the same problems. A lot of incomplete applications, a lot of it, people didn't apply because they weren't sure and everything. So I think the word is getting out now, and I think the second round will bring a lot more people who qualify, would qualify for this, so, and open it up to, to all businesses.
Do we, or did we print a copy in the papers of this application form?
It was, it was in the papers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, should I talk nonprofit?
You certainly can.
And maybe opening up this, this grant round two, nonprofits, those who help disabled people, employment, things like that, veterans, groups, people, nonprofits who provide food for, for different, to the, to the public, things like that. I think that's important, that they, they went through a lot of allocations just to help the public, too, and businesses.
Questions, commissioners? Well, it sounds like it's moving along, not maybe as fast as we'd like it, but at least we're making progress.
I think we have, I, as I did say before, we had, it's the same situation around the whole state.
Yeah.
People find the applications come in slow, because people are hesitant to apply for it. And I think the second round will definitely change that.
People are afraid to put their hand out, because there's always a slap coming later, so...
That or people are, that or, yeah, that or people are proud and stuff like that.
Yeah, right. And that's great. I mean, I'm glad they're proud, but if you're struggling, don't be afraid to ask for help. So... Okay, any questions, guys? If not, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chair, just to wrap that up, I just wanna really thank all of the departments, and also you as commissioners for sitting in on these meetings. I know that just makes your schedule quite a bit more busy, but it's been very helpful just to have that commissioner aspect to weigh in on these projects, and departments have been working pretty hard on getting all of this put together, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, solid waste survey, is that next?
Yes, it is. So the background on this, the last commissioners' work session on August 18th, we discussed, Commissioner Newman requested a solid waste citizen survey be done. So we were provided with survey questions from, a survey that was done within Ottertail County, that had, I think it was 22 questions that were included in that. So we were asked, the commissioners were asked to choose 10 out of the 22 questions to put together a survey to run through Todd County process. And I do have responses on the questions, and I'm just gonna find that really quick. So the questions that we've decided on, or that the commissioners have decided on, really revolve around the recycling aspect, which is what Commissioner Newman was looking for. So the tallies are that we will look at questions... I'll just run through these quickly. Question one, which is just an understanding, the familiarity of the services provided by Todd County, solid waste. And then number two, which is to rate your satisfaction. I think that'll be a great question to ask. Number four, how do you currently manage your solid waste produced within your household or your business? Number five is, in your opinion, which of the following influence your participation? And that really revolves around availability of services and cost and location. Number six is what types of materials do you regularly recycle? And number seven, which is how many times do you visit the transfer station? How many times have you visited in the past year? And then from there, we go into the demographics of question 19, 20, and 21, which have to do with an age group. Do you live in Todd County all year round, or are you seasonal? And then, do you live in a city or a township? And Commissioner Newman has asked to have one additional question added to the survey, and that is, are you aware, are you aware of who the current haulers are within Todd County? So the options are to accept, we just did the review of the final questions, to accept them, and then to set a timeframe for the survey collect, survey collection, or to bring this back to the September 15th board for more discussion, and set a timeframe, or to do nothing. And the recommendation is to select these final questions as noted, and set the timeframe for the survey collection.
And how it'll be distributed?
So, Mr. Chair, that would go out through Survey Monkey, and it would be posted on the website. We would also do a press release on this, as we had in the past with our last survey that we did. That did give us pretty good results. We could also do, since it is 10 questions, we could put it on a hard card right at the transfer station, when people come in, and they could check off the boxes. And I would recommend a three-week timeframe for survey collection. That seems to be a good timeframe.
Yeah.
So do they have to mail them back if they get a hard copy, or what? Can they have a drop-off box, or...
We would have a drop box right there. So maybe while they're waiting, they could just fill out the survey and drop it, just leave it there.
Okay. All right. Questions, board members? Are you okay with the selected... We need a motion to approve that, or just...
Yes.
Okay. All right, you've been showing the final question, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Newman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Canizel. Discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, um, being there's no other business, any reports, auditor treasurer?
Um, yes, I'd like to report that absentee voting opens September eighteenth. Our volume already for applications that are in our office is extremely high, I believe due to COVID. We're going to see a large increase in our A/B voting. I think as of last week, we were over a thousand already. Um, that's typically what we normally have, and we haven't even opened yet, so it's going to be crazy in our office. And then we just wanted to comment that we had a successful tax forfeited land sale, um, last Friday, or on the twenty-first, and we took in, um, sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars on that for the county. So got a lot of items sold, and there's some, still pending where people were at the auction, but are going to come back and tentatively interested in parcels.
That money that comes in for the sale of them, where does that go, Denise? Does that go back into the general fund, or what, or is that?
Well, it, it, what'd you say? Yeah, I was just going to say, it's divided. We'll, it'll go into the tax forfeited fund to offset fees that we've had.
Yeah.
And then we do a settlement in February.
For all the groups?
And then everybody gets their portion paid out to.
Okay, I was just wondering what happened.
Yep, it's a typical settlement.
Okay. All right, anything else? Commissioners?
Yes, I would. Um, I would like to thank Soil and Water, and Planting and Zoning, and Nancy Through the Ditches. Uh, we've had some interesting, um, problems come up this past week, and they worked very, very good, uh, worked very well with the people we were dealing with, and found some very good solutions to solve their problems. So I'd just like to send a thank you out for that group.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, last Wednesday at our solid waste meeting in Perm, um, the finance committee, their, uh, discussion was on, we have a five-year plan for fixing things at the, at the plant, and they came up with a decision that they were, wanted to combine some of them things, shorten, shorten it down to like a two-and-a-half-year plan, double up on some of the things. And by doing that, they need to bond for some money. So that'll be coming to us in the near future, and each board will have to vote on it. But it's two million dollars, Otter Tail County is going to do the bonding.
School agent.
So, what they come up with, uh, by shortening that, not for timeframe down, it shortens our shutdowns. And, uh, when you shut down, you have to shut down the fix, so it costs thirty thousand dollars a day, every day that they're shut down, at least thirty thousand dollars. And so by shortening that timeframe, we figured they could save nine hundred thousand dollars, which, you know, is a lot of money too, so. So that's going to be coming to us, probably our next board meeting, whether we want to approve that or not. So I just give you a heads up on that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, we will recess until the fifteenth, I'm sorry, fifteenth. And, uh, will we be doing the preliminary levy on the fifteenth? Okay? And, uh, we'll recess till then, and then we'll take a short break, and we have a work session, so. Question, is Nancy coming in?
Yes, she's here.
Morning.
Well, this is theirs, I'm just going to be sitting here in case you have questions. And then I'll do my next one.
All right, this is just our annual breakdown of our assessment year for July twenty-nineteen through June twenty-twenty. It'll be for taxes payable in twenty-twenty-one. These are just the proposed ditch assessments that we wanted to bring forth to show you. Um, these will be coming on a formal board action on the September fifth board meeting. It talks about each ditch, what their total assessment is, if there was included any prior expenses, the yes or no's, and it includes anticipated expenses, yes or no's. Those are the things Nancy could talk about, the expenses. Um, ditch eighteen was a loan that was approved in twen, December of seventeen by the county board, transferring three hundred thousand to, from the general fund to cover the expenses occurred in this project until assessment is paid off in full. These are just some side notes. The county board did adopt a unique back pay term in eighteen due to the size of the project. That one ended up being a ten-year repay, repay plan with a two percent interest. Um, and then the first principal amount was seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents. It was approved by county board in December of nineteen to transfer from Fund Forty to the general fund. And in twenty-twenty, we're projecting twenty thousand in principal payment to pay back. So that's the snapshot of where we're at on ditch assessments.
Um, and the other thing on ditch eighteen, there was that brush control project we were doing. I wasn't sure how much it was going to cost. We got an estimate for fifteen thousand, we, fifteen, some change. We did an assessment already for that of six thousand, and the total bill came into six thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So we're only going to have to do another seven hundred and fifty dollar assessment to pay for that. So that came in, there was a lot less brush, um, to be sprayed than what we were thinking there would be for fifteen miles of ditch, so.
And do any of these ditches, I think ditch nineteen has a fund, does any of these other ones have a?
No.
Fund set up?
No, no. And most of these expenses were all Beaver expenses. There was a couple that were hold harmless agreements, so there were some ditch inspector fees. Um, but the majority of these are all just Beaver expenses.
And these are the ones we put on annually, once a year, because they're smaller amounts, so that it can go on the taxes and be divided out in their little, little amounts that they have to pay. So this is kind of a nice, even our auditors have commented. In fact, he just emailed the other day asking, "Can you give us how you guys do ditches in Todd County again?" Because he's sharing it with other counties, so that's a, a plug for us here, that we're actually on the right track with her.
So if we keep doing it this way, we almost don't need maintenance funds.
Right.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Though there's something big, you what?
I was going to ask you that, if we needed to have maintenance.
Yeah, unless we know there's something big coming, I mean, because we're keeping, there isn't really anything being paid for by the general fund year after year after year, doing it this way, so.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is, uh, ditch nineteen.
Yep. So I had gotten, um, if you can see on my inspection report that I wrote out, I'd gotten a complaint, um, about a, a blockage that was on this ditch system, so I went out and took a look at it, and then had some other concerns of my own. Um, so the blockage is up where you can see there, and then there's the section of ditch from County Road sixteen that has had some congestion over the years, but it's been getting worse and worse. Um, so I figured if we're going to be sending a backhoe in there anyway to take that blockage out, it may be a good time to look at doing a minor repair on that section from, um, the nine hundred and fifty feet from County Road sixteen. So, um, this blockage, if you want to roll up for the next picture.
Is this round going?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is actually the, this is the section of ditch sixteen, or this is the section, um, just north of County Road sixteen, that just gets congested like this every year. I went out there to do soil borings because we were trying to, because I talked to Andy Stadma about doing, um, a bid on it, and to see if, um, we wanted to just remove the vegetation, or if we actually wanted to remove silt. So there is about two feet of silt in this section, so it wouldn't make any sense just to remove the vegetation, because it'll grow right back in the, in the silt that's there. Um, and it's a pretty wide ditch, so he would have to clean from both sides. Um, so there is about two feet in this section that could be removed. Um, and when you're looking at it down the road financially, it doesn't make any sense just to dredge out the, the vegetation without taking the sediment with it. And then, this is the, this is the blockage that got reported. Um, when the grass grows in, it's actually about fifty feet wide, and it's holding back, um, about six to eight inches of, of water, so it's something that should be removed. So even if we don't do the minor maintenance, we still need to go in and get this removed. And then there was the culvert, um, that looked really bad when I went and looked at it at first, and when Andy and I went back to take a look at it, all of this has already washed out. That sludge that was in the ditch, the, um, culvert has moved, and it's not, it's, and I can't find, so it must have sunk to the bottom after it moved out of there. So there's nothing holding water back anymore at this crossing, so this doesn't need anything done with it.
Where's that at?
It is just, um, south of Dale Hosts, it's on that minimum maintenance road.
Oh, okay.
So, so basically, um, I'm proposing to remove that blockage and then do a minor maintenance. I'm still waiting for Andy to give me a bid on what it would cost. But without tree removal, um, the only thing that'd be more expensive is because he'd have to clean from both sides of the ditch in order to reach all the way across, since it's as wide as it is. But there would be no tree removal or anything like that, so. I'm not anticipating it to be more than two, two-fifty a foot.
Well, they have a maintenance fund there anywhere in that ditch.
Yep, and Jolene said this morning, their potential cash balance is eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents. So the only thing that I can see coming up in the next year or two would be another brush spraying, but we're getting to the point where there's not a whole lot to spray anymore, um, since we've done it every three years. Yep, well, the whole ditch line.
Okay, what about the settling pond by Terrills, is that?
We just got done cleaning that. Um, that was last year, wasn't it?
That was last year or year before, but, yeah, okay.
Yep, last year. Yep, and that's already been assessed, taken out of this dollar amount.
Okay.
So the only thing upcoming would be if we did brush spraying again.
And all of this is basically south of, um, Dale Katterhagans, right?
It'll make me think. No, this is the, this, Katterhagan is north of this on a different branch.
North, yep.
On a different, on a different branch. Yeah, oh yeah, this is also, yep. And he's on a different branch than this is. This is the branch that goes up through and then goes to the Long Prairie River.
That goes to Terrills.
To Terrills, yep. I should have brought a whole map of nineteen.
Duncan, is that Duncan?
Used to be Duncan.
Used to be, yeah.
I don't know who lives there now.
I don't either.
Um, Carsonson's is south of this, Parrish is south of this.
Parrish, okay. Yep, okay. Well, we don't, we can't give you permission here, so.
Nope, so I'm waiting for Andy to give me that number, and then when he does, then I'll bring it back.
Good, okay.
To the next, to a next, to another board meeting when I get that.
Okay, good. Thanks, Nancy.
That's all you guys have to, that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tell the work, who, are you doing that one, or?
So, Mr. Chair, just a little bit of background to why we're here, um, at this work session. Through the Policies Committee, typically what we have been working on are updates to our current policies, so just making some changes, um, some language change, and things that make sense to better fit the needs of the county. We started having a discussion about a telework policy because of our current COVID situation. Um, we do have a, a very short, I'm not even going to call it really a policy, we have a telework agreement that we put into place very quickly due to COVID, but, um, it just brought a little bit of light to the subject that we haven't, we don't have a telework policy. So we started working on that, and then we put the brakes on and said, "Maybe we should talk to the commissioners and find out if they want us to work on a telework policy." So we kind of put the cart before the horse, maybe, before we got full consideration by, by the board, if this is really a direction you would like to go. So that's why we're bringing it here.
Yeah, I, I think during our discussion, that was, you know, because right now, when we do applications and so forth, we, we've never promoted working from home or telework. And that's why, you know, we wanted the whole commissioners to weigh in on which direction or, or where we should go from there.
Well, I think it's critical that we have a policy for our personnel to conduct themselves under doing telework, otherwise we kind of have an open door thing and don't have any issue or anything we could concrete, we can stand on if there's a problem. So, um, I hate policies, the more policies we develop, but, you know, I hate that I always hate this, this is the new norm, but I don't know how long this is going to last. Maybe this is the thing of the future. You know, people are always asking to work at home, but I, I believe we should have some policy on it, so it's, I don't, I hope it isn't in great detail or twenty pages long, but just.
I think the Policy Committee Administrator Chair is looking for not only during the COVID season, but if we want to continue with ongoing telework. So, in this pandemic, but is it something that you would like, that you are okay with or approving, um, that we move forward after the pandemic is over, for telework?
Well, I've never been a big fan of this, because I'm from the old school, but- Well, I've never been a big fan of this because I'm from the old school, but my two concerns are productivity and accountability. So if we don't have that, then I have big, big concerns, so. But again, I'm from the old school, and maybe it's time for me to move on.
It was interesting, the conversation we had of, of how you can use different means of keeping track of the work that's actually being done from telework. And Chris can probably.
So we talked a lot in the Policy Committee meeting about tools that are available, auditing tools that are available. But the discussion that we really had was that the tools are not just for telework, they're for all work. So having, making sure that supervisors and managers are very well aware of what the staff are doing, whether they are physically here or they're working from a remote location. And having those tools available to be able to look at productivity, and again, looking at it from a full countywide picture, not just a specific group who might be working remotely. So that was, that was really the takeaway from that, from that meeting.
Well, Sarah, if we have accountability, and productivity probably isn't your cup of tea, but accountability, if, okay. If, sorry, if, how to, proving things when you're doing telework. How do we, if, if, if an employee isn't, and I know we've had some issues, but how do we prove if they're not producing, and how do we, and then how do we discipline and carry out a grievance procedure? I mean, if there's, if I'm at home and you say today, Dave, you gotta work eight hours at home, and you look tomorrow and I didn't do all that, how do we correct it? How do we do discipline on employees? That's my concern. We gotta have proof.
Yeah, you have to have a proof. And I, I think the goals that we establish for our employees each year on their performance reviews are part of that accountability. Like, you're going to produce this many widgets in this amount of time. We don't produce widgets here, but we have, we currently have measures in place that measure how many visits is a child protection social worker conducting on a regular basis? And the, how many clients do you have, and how many contacts do you have with those, those clients? So yes, it is challenging to discipline somebody for a short-term issue. And we, we generally, we rely on our employees being honest about their work. And we also need to trust them about their work. And they need to be in communication with their supervisors on the work that they're accomplishing.
Mr. Chair, I think we could also just put in some really good measures. I mean, by department, we could put in some measures where you could actually, I mean, I'm sure a lot of departments already have that into place. But to have those measurables where you can say you're producing this and this amount of time. And you could do that both for those who are working here and those who are working remotely. I think, I think it goes both ways, measuring productivity, so.
And then, the other thing that I think about is, well, my daughter, for one, has young kids at home, and she's working at home. So where do you draw the line on taking care of the kids or working, so?
We have been pretty clear on our telework that telework is not a substitute for childcare. You do need childcare when you're working. Now, COVID times have been different. There have been exceptions. There's one example I know of that employee gets up early in the morning, starts working, child wakes up, takes care of child for a little while, other parent then tag teams and takes care of child for a little while. Employee goes back to work. Their hours have been lengthened, and we have been very flexible with that. A telework policy is not a flexible work policy either. We do expect our employees to work the hours that they, they communicate to their supervisor. So that's an extreme example of something that we're, we're trying to accommodate these awkward times that we're in right now.
Yeah, if I could add, Sarah, we did have quite a bit of discussion about this during that time, because it's, you know, is the norm, Dave, from that eight to 4:30 when they telework? Or they would have to get permission from their supervisor to be able to vary from that work? And that's one of the things that would have to be in the policy. You know, how do they get permission to do this?
Mr. Chair, I would just add to that, that not every position has the ability to telework. So I mean, there, you, you have front desk positions and, and different positions where you have to be that person here for the customer. And it's, it's not going to be a fit for everybody. So department heads and managers will be making those determinations if the board decides we continue moving forward.
And in that discussion, it was, I mean, should it be up to the commissioners to say which people or departments can use tele, and which ones cannot? Because there have to be people here, cause we're service-oriented also. So there has to be people here to help them coming in that need help too.
A very obvious example is a correctional officer cannot work from home.
No.
They need to be in the jail.
Funny them tried it.
Mr. Chair, so out of our 16 departments, how many are gonna require this? Number one, is it gonna be half? Is it gonna be eight? Eight departments gonna do it, or? And then the next question would be, is where are the unions sitting on this? You know, cause they're gonna put their two cents in on it.
Mr. Chair, the purpose of the discussion today was really just to get that feel from the board and have these types of questions being asked. And I think we, we really need to take a strong look at the different policies that are out there from other counties and see how some of these questions are being addressed. But again, I think it goes back to what makes sense, what positions should telework, which ones we know cannot telework, and the departments and the managers who are very good at what they do, making good decisions on who can work and the number of people who could work from home, figuring out those work schedules. Is it one day a week? Is it a couple of hours? What is it? So.
And Randy, to your point on the unions, I know they're gonna probably put their two cents in, but I am a firm believer of not losing our managerial rights and us being the bosses and not the unions. So that's my comment, so. I, I'm very strong with that, so hopefully the committee keeps that in mind. I, I think you should, so I don't know what the other commissioners think, so. Everybody okay with it? Start a policy?
And again, when we complete the policy, or Policies Committee gets as far as we can, we'll bring it back to work session for you. We didn't wanna get too far into it and then have you guys say, well, what are you working on this for?
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate it.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy?
Yes, Mr. Chair. On our One Watershed One Plan meeting last week, we had a pretty good discussion on the Sauk River Watershed Collaborative Agreement. And Commissioner from Douglas County, Commissioner Rapp, and myself voted against this. And the fact was, is if Stearns County becomes the fiscal agent, and say we have 100,000, or $500,000 project, and we're $100,000 short, they wanted Todd County to say, okay, we would be responsible for part of that $100,000. Well, if we're responsible for part of that $100,000 in the Sauk River Watershed, now there's five, five entities involved, okay? If the watershed has tax and authority, and Todd County has tax and authority, are those people getting taxed twice? Because how would you make that money up to pay that shortfall? And Bowser really doesn't have answer for that right now, and I think that's concerning. And for me, with two other commissioners that have constituents that are paying into the Sauk River Watershed as taxes, I got a concern there. And then you throw in Todd County Water and Soil, who does not have tax and authority, okay? Where are they gonna get the money? And what it stated in there, it would be Todd County's responsibility to cover for Todd County Water and Soil. Again, hitting the taxpayers. So we got some questions on this, and I just wanted to get your thoughts on, on how you feel. I did send this to the county attorney, and his response was, to me was, he thought it looked okay, but wait for the other counties' attorneys to respond, so.
What, did they, did it pass, Randy, or no, or what?
Um, yeah, it, it passed with a 5-4 vote.
So then, that comes back to the counties?
It will come back to the county for us to sign. But they did leave the verbiage out as far as the fiscal responsibility. But they continue to say, well, we can always bring it back. That's concerning, because is that double taxation? And that's what Commissioner Rapp and his board was gonna talk about today, was the fact of, okay, if you're already paying the county's portion, or if the county has to pay that portion, and the watershed has to pay that portion, we're gonna get hit twice.
Well, my question is, I think you, I didn't quite follow it to start with, but if they do a project, and they're over their bid price or 100,000, they don't have a contingency to make up for that, or that?
Correct.
Or we are their contingency?
I think they wanna make us the contingency. And that's something we need to discuss. Are we willing to do that? Are we willing to be the checkbook for these projects? And then, another concern I had was, I look at, okay, Commissioner Knizel's district, or Commissioner Becker's district, and say, well, jeez, you guys up there need to fork out for a project down in the southwestern part of the county.
All, all the taxpayers.
Right. So.
I thought that money was supposed to come from Bowser, all the money for these projects.
Well, but again, if they do a project and we're short, and Stearns County would be the fiscal agent, and that's what we ask. We asked Stearns County, instead of the watershed, to be the fiscal agent, and they're short. Would we, as taxpayers of Todd County, be willing to submit funding to Stearns County to cover that project? So it's getting, starting to get interesting. It's a little different from the, the Long Prairie Watershed, where you just have, you know, the county boards and the water soils.
Smaller watersheds with no levee.
Exactly. So, I don't know, guys. Commissioner Rapp and myself will probably have a conversation today and, and find out what each other's boards think.
How did our new representative vote, our new layperson?
Uh, down there? No. So.
Has he been good?
So far. We gotta have, we gotta have some control.
Yep, I just was wondering, cause I know he's.
So, but I will, I did send Commissioner Kircher and Commissioner Erickson a copy of the watershed plan. It is 348 pages of some fantastic reading.
I didn't print it.
You get a chance, you read that, you look in there on page, what the hell page was that? I don't know. I'd send it to Chris, but that's, it'll stayed in there, our responsibility, or Todd County's.
If I may, Mr. Chair, in talking about the taxation part of it, since I'm the one that does that end of it, they would, the watershed, if they would do a project, would send me the special assessments to add to the parcels in your districts. But Commissioner Newman is exactly right. If you had to absorb that 100,000, that would be against the general levy, and everybody in Todd County would pay that.
Exactly.
I think it's just Randy and I's district. Does Rod have any?
Rod has.
Oh, do you?
Yep.
Yes.
Rod has constituents within the watershed, so.
That is something to think about, because it would be affecting.
And, and I made that statement.
Not only that, but even the people that are in the watershed, the, like you said, the double taxation, because they're paying the watershed. Plus then the second time around, they'd be paying again.
Yep. So it's concerning, and that's something that we need to probably get ahold of our state legislators and say, hey, you know, somewhere along the line, you need to clarify this for us, because why would we wanna double tax somebody on a project? So, that's all I have, and I will keep you guys abreast. I will try to keep you guys informed of what's going on, both you, Commissioner Kircher, and Commissioner Erickson. Our Water and Soil Representative, Mr. Williamson, did vote with us and voted no, so.
Randy, do you guys, as far as a legal representative, what, I'm sure the watershed has an attorney.
Oh, yeah.
What would we utilize as an attorney if we wanted to?
Our county attorney?
No. I'm just saying, is there any other attorney we would use for advice on this that would have some expertise?
Well, if you would go to Kurt Dieter's, that's a conflict of interest, because they represent the watershed.
What about our zoning?
We might. We could check with him, but we might have to find another legal counsel that specializes in ditch law.
Money we got, but it's just, I don't know, sometimes he's get, if you got 300 pages, if we're understanding it, is.
Right. And, and I believe all of us are, are in favor of clean water. But it's just.
Can't break yourself to do it, so.
Exactly.
Okay, anything else? Questions, guys? All right, and again, we'll recess until.